Hello. No, I'm trying to get this set up. Yeah. What's up? Oh, yeah, no, I'm right in the middle, I'm trying to get this going. Do you have, do you have the key to get in, right? Oh, okay. Gotcha. Sorry. Alright. Okay, Will saved my life. His marriage was, can we get copies of the questions? I was like, are you kidding me, you're asking me this right now? So I renamed it Will because he was like right downstairs by my house. I'm like, Will, help! He's like, okay, I'll help you. So, you know the problem is it cut off one of them. I'm with my heroic handwriting. Hello.
Hello.
I'm Mayor Andrew Sartke.
I'm Thomas Thomas.
Nice to meet you, I know we're not well. It's a habit!
I did it my first tour, I just.
So where? How far out on Foster do you live?
Uh, what, 435 West Foster? I think it is.
So you're by the lake?
You're not that far from it.
Okay, I used to live, um, right by Western and Foster. And then, but I only lived there briefly. And I went to church right off Foster in Andersonville area, but, um, then I moved down to North Town and by Ridleyville and that's where I ended up staying at, my kids were born there in that area and then, um, moved back here 16 years ago.
Okay.
But, so I lived in Chicago for 10 years.
Yeah, my, my daughter used to have a place down by Ridley Field, we'd go visit her, we'd watch the games.
Yup, yup. We walked to the games, we lived literally directly 1.3 miles directly west of Ridley Field. So, we were literally between Wayland and Addison, so we just walked straight towards Ridley. So it was kind of fun.
Good.
Can you hear everything?
Enjoyed the tour.
Good. I was around this afternoon, but not until a little bit later, I mean, I think you guys were still out. I had to go to the funeral. Will, can you hear anything?
Yeah, I can hear you, can you hear me? Michelle, can you hear me?
Okay. It's nice.
I've been typing that all day.
Oh, that's the one thing that's driving me nuts of these, I have to give it a breakthrough, so I close behind. That's why I left this one a little better, because it does it a little better right now.
Hey. Can you hear me?
Hi, so I can't hear you over my speakers.
Hmm. I can see and hear, I can, actually I got an echo because I'm listening to you on my phone and the computer screen. But...
But I can't hear you.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not muted. Can you hear me now?
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Mary Roberts.
I'm Thomas Thomas, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Thank you for coming.
Appreciate being invited.
Andy, do we have like?
Mary, I made
Hello.
copies.
I'm Lance Strayer, I'm Thomas Thomas.
Question six went missing. We realized it after we made the copies because Will was helping me do them really fast. The copies, because she was already not on.
Oh, okay.
We can sit, we can have to sit at our own.
Perfect.
But, so, I'm trying to wrap, will you can you read it, ready?
You can probably see me, right? That's, that's fantastic. You got it?
Thank you.
No problem, see you later.
Ooh, that was good, I wonder if mine's on, I better check.
Matt and I went over the tape measure. We just didn't touch it through table.
So I can send the tape nicely?
Yeah. Just didn't have it here.
Oh, sorry about that.
Okay.
I did not realize, Mary, when I printed this at home, that it cut question six off, but I made copies of it.
Well, I expect to do that. Well, I'll print your last copy, Joe.
Oh, well, I just ran right then and made copies.
Yeah.
Because I already had my own, I just hadn't checked it to see that you know, so that I realized I didn't even have question six on, you know? Just the way it printed out, I don't know why.
I don't have a printer.
I do, but it's, it's not, this is when it's a problem. This is exactly what it said. You need, do you need the papers, Lad?
What is it?
What is this? This is questions, where it's at.
Do you want this, Lad? I'm writing it for you.
Okay.
That too.
Yeah, you can, but I want, I'm, I'm terrible at remembering what are questions. So...
And I have a third grade handwriting, I always got better grades in math, so I'm sorry. Blame it on my luck, I'm in this. I know my brother's a doctor and he has Christine handwriting. Well, and I as a teacher, I terrible. So hopefully carry my work handwriting.
Just anywhere, or do you have seats for us, Mayor?
It's just, you should be taking a seat at a yeah, wherever you want, do you guys want me to get the do you want the questions that Ryan gave us in addition to these? The ones that you sent.
Sure.
Okay, I'm just warning you that number six didn't print, so I'm writing it, and I have bad handwriting, so.
Alright.
I'm doing it right now for you, okay?
So do we have any masks?
Oh, I could come out in my hand.
I have.
Well, we got three people with no masks, so I got mine. Oh, yo, you have two shoes.
I, I have some.
Well, I'll go to my car and get my.
My wife took my car home.
I saw that, you have your driver, your Uber driver.
Yeah, I had my driver, oh, I mean, it's fine.
No, I, I have Sienna Heights.
Oh, I.
Yeah, we have like those, and they're really, really flimsy.
They're super flimsy.
What's going on?
But you can breathe in them. I like that you can breathe in them, though.
I don't, I don't, you're fucking, it helps.
That was me that honked at you today, you know that, right?
I knew that.
Okay, because I was like, is that Alan walking his dog? What's that? And I'm driving and I'm like, I think that's Alan, and I'm like, it is!
Yeah.
Look at you, Alan, go, go!
Well, yeah, I'm trying, you know? Help your knee.
Yes. Yes, I will talk to you later, I have not had time, I have been running around like chicken.
I can make the call.
No, he gave me like the next bit, you were gone. He like wanted to do it.
I had a telephone.
I know, but you were gonna be gone, and then I think he's gone again now, I don't know.
Oh, okay.
He's got like a really crazy schedule, so I think that's why.
Alright, you, call me later.
I know, I have been so busy, I've literally been like like everybody thinks I disappeared or I think everywhere, because I've been running around.
You feel like you're being ignored?
Oh. I didn't know if I was supposed to come in the room yet, I was out there, I was alone, she's here.
We're a little informal sometimes.
I hope when we start, maybe I could take this off the talk, it's good, kinda.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Maybe it's why I sound muffled talking to you.
Like I said, excuse the third grade handwriting. Question six did not print on my center.
I have.
Oh, yeah.
I literally have that vision.
Yeah, they have pretty strict.
Are students coming back to your campus right now?
Yup, yup, start Friday. There's some coming, I've got a couple coming around.
Thank you so much, Mary, I appreciate it.
Would you like one? They're really flimsy, but I work at this university. You're welcome.
Thank you.
These are promotional, I think they're good as you can read from, I actually like.
Mr. Gau, can you get out of my six feet, please?
I I did say you were in Monroe this morning.
Yup.
Do you have any good ideas?
Alright, why do you guys smell this really loud?
That'd be me, Mary.
It's me!
I take pride in my hygiene.
Always nice.
They're very flimsy, but you know what?
Pride of your hygiene.
Yeah, yeah.
It's weird to see you in person, I haven't seen you in so long.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, other than Zoom.
I haven't seen Brad in shoot weeks.
Yeah.
As you wave across the street. I got nobody to wave at.
Well, do you know that when I went to my office, it was time, Mary and things weren't finally allowed in, but I have certain hours I can't either. My phone would even work on our.
Well, yeah, it's not spending as much time there this year as he has to pass. Because usually Memorial Day, he's there, doesn't come home.
Yeah, my phone won't even pick up Sienna Heights.
Oh, you're drunk, man.
Rachel's very good. She's got to transfer all the syllabus. It's a big appearance. It's a big appearance.
When it's time for public comment, I'll come over and you'll be able to hear the sound through the TV instead of through this, if that makes sense.
Yup. Thank you. So are you gonna sit out there, or are you gonna sit right here? Okay. You're not even leaving, okay.
Yup, I'll be right here.
That's what I was asking you. That's why I just wanted to know, thanks.
My, my app is not so engaging.
Are you guys not able to get in either?
I'm gonna just, I remember we got these back when you first got elected, we got new ones, and we got those old ghetto ones, then we got new ones.
Yeah.
These are four years old, they look obsolete too.
Yeah, I mean, you just gotta keep up with technology.
You're trying to get into the email?
Yeah, I, I just got on, but then I click on a document and it won't open.
I'm pretty sure I got cursed.
Well, is that the document that Gordon sent out? Because it's a weird format.
Yeah, it's Microsoft Pages.
Pages.
Not Microsoft, uh.
I don't click on anything from Gordon, it's always spam or.
Yeah, yeah, he's on junk.
Yeah, I did, I dropped the S off of your last name, and I know you got it. Don't tell me that.
Are you leaving Mary off tonight or what?
Yup.
I just said, yeah. Actually, I left the R off of it.
I don't need to know anything. I saw, I saw your comment on that one app.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was in at the beach, I'm like, you know what, I'm bored, so. Having a couple beers, I might as well engage a little bit.
Yeah, you guys did, good job.
Did you listen to him on Doug Spade's show?
I go on Doug Spade's Saturday, too.
I, I heard, I was in Toledo.
Yeah.
Now the Florida districts from Pennsylvania are just like this big, and I swear they're attached to the light. Like the leper, like, like where you're told not to attach stuff to. Really, oh, that's where it was. But it was really tiny and oh, okay, not what I was expecting from Pennsylvania. Just very generic, like you go out and get anything.
I, I just drove through there, I didn't even notice something, see?
I didn't either, and it was only because I stopped at that bakery right there. Yeah, I didn't know sign.
Just in front.
You're impressed.
Yeah. New development. Kinda cool, people's talked about it for years.
This is so much fun to listen to.
I'm learning a lot.
Share what you learned.
That's gonna be the first question.
Yeah.
Hey, Robin.
Poor Robin, on vacation.
Hi, Jim.
She's on vacation up north in Jacob, and you can tell when you watch, I was looking at it last night.
Well, actually, it's kind of work vacation.
Okay.
Where, where are you at, Robin? If you can share. You don't have.
Uh, we're up in Black Lake in Onaway.
Yeah, yeah, Gaylord, did you know?
He's been showing up a lot.
And we used to go to Black Lake, my, my husband's in law retired in Chautauqua, so we were at Black River all the time.
Oh, usually no one knows where it is, so I'm impressed you know where it is.
I know where it is, my aunt, uncle had cabin there. I went to their state park as during the summer of freshman soccer and sophomore junior, that's where we had our basketball camp, we moved camps there for girls' basketball.
Well, we're actually here because we're hoping to close on our property on Tuesday, or Thursday, so that's why we're up here.
Oh, nice.
Cool!
Someplace that we can visit.
Wait. I ate lunch, I'd rather just go for a drink.
Lad. Yes, what kind of bird was that this morning?
What type, what?
Bird. You know, your fascination with birds?
I was out there at eight, in Monroe.
Why?
Why?
Was that my form?
For, I, I formed my own thing. Tried to photograph a bird.
In Monroe?
In Monroe.
You're proud of the city, bro?
Yesterday I was in Toledo.
Well, you support the birds a little bit? Yeah, yeah, young local birds.
Yeah, yeah, what's wrong with Adrianian birds?
It's just trying to broaden my horizon.
That's good to hear.
Ready? It's five o'clock.
It is five.
Good? Are we gonna are we, because we're all seated, should we have to keep our masks on now?
We're in our building, so we have to.
Okay, well, I was just making sure.
Just being a little tougher to talk, but I'll make it work.
Like, we, we don't have to
You can lower it.
At different places, if you're suited, so.
Do you believe?
Let's move then.
I'll look it up to make sure it goes the way around, so I'll get your chair up.
Oh, I'll, I'll make. I just want to be sure. Okay, ready? Okay. I call to order the Adrianian City Commission's special meeting, August 18th, 2020. Everyone will please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Last part you lost in this meeting. Yeah, why?
My wife.
Oh, okay.
Okay, well, to start out our interview with Thomas E. Thomas, um, welcome, Thomas.
Thank you.
And, um, if we could just go around and introduce ourselves one more time. I know you were introducing yourselves as you came in, but let's just do that, so he can help try to remember our names, okay? We'll start with you, Commissioner Roberts, if you want. I'm Mary Roberts.
Hello.
Been on the commission for, not quite two years.
My name is Lad Strayer, and I've been on the commission four and a half years.
Alan Helt, uh, first elected in 2013 and reelected in November.
Hello.
Brad Watson, uh, I was elected in November of 2017, I'm also the mayor of Brooklyn.
Hello.
Gordon Gausse, I was elected November of 2019, just last November.
Hello.
And I am Mayor Andrew Sartke, also elected in November of 2019.
Well, I'm Thomas Thomas, I'm the city manager, thank you for inviting me.
Do we, uh, so, do we want to go through, do we want to go through the questions that I've given you and then ask our own questions at the end? How do you want, how do you want to proceed from here? Do you want to do that?
I would say like the first problem is right.
Right, yup, and I have, and we'll just go in order, so it'll, I'll ask, um, do you want, um, everybody to ask two questions and I can start, and then it'll be Commissioner Helt, Commissioner Roberts in our, in our normal order? Do you want to do it that way?
I'd just go around.
Just go around? Okay, I'm asking how you want to do it.
Number six.
Yeah.
You're the only one that's gonna be able to read that.
Oh, what? See? Be nice to me! Okay. So, okay, so we'll just go, um, we'll go around the room. How does that sound? Um, wanna start, let's start at Commissioner Watson, and then we'll go to Commissioner Gausse, and then we'll come to myself, and that way I'll have five and six. See, there you go. Does that sound good? Alright, so Commissioner Watson, if you would like to begin?
Sure. How do you find ways to lead when opinions are very different and sometimes polarized?
I've had that happen in my career a few times, and I think one of the examples I gave is I had to go through a process when I was in Rock Island. We had an issue with overpopulation of deer. And we had overpopulation of deer.
Beer.
Beer, beer.
Yeah, take it off.
We're not gonna tell.
With, um, overpopulation of deer.
Oh, deer?
Yes.
Yeah.
And, uh, we were split between two groups of, uh, leave it here alone, and, uh, the second group, we need to do some sort of culling process. And, um, we went through a two, three month process of, uh, multiple work sessions. Bringing in experts in urban forestry, uh, expert dealing with deer. Dealing from everything from deer and tick infestation to how would you go about culling deer in a densely populated community that's 90% built out? That was probably one of the longest and most, uh, engaged processes that I'd ever gone through in my entire five years there. That topped over dealing with budgeting, uh, tax increases at that top, dealing with cap improvement projects. We built it up, I built it up facts. We had there done in the community, where they flew over, got an idea of how many deer was, uh, in the community. We had to wait till we had snow to do it. We had to bring back reports about how, um, the deer numbers would be in, uh, being infected by, by when they go through the season of breeding. When we got the number account, we were identified as having an overpopulation. Then we had to go through the process of doing, how we go about culling it. By bow and arrow, by sharp shooting, uh, by doing some sort of process of, uh, of giving them some sort of shot to make them, uh, unable to breed. And after multiple times of going in and dealing through facts, I gave the recommendation of doing a pilot program where we identify certain areas that have a certain amount of square footage in the community. And we would do a bow and arrow. We did it for a three month period to try it out, see if it worked. It would have to be a voluntary basis, people could identify the areas that were wide enough to do it in. And that first pilot program, where they would have them get licenses, they could only do, they could only shoot a certain amount of deer versus doe. And they would have to take it into the nearest fire station, get it registered, and identify once they'd done the kill. It was part of one of the most long-term DTL processes we went through. But we built consensus through facts, we built the consensus through community engagements. We would have one time, one group would show up saying, we're against doing anything to the deer, some people can even dress as bandit. To the group showing up there talking about, they're killing my hostages. They, uh, I'm concerned about getting infected with ticks and Lyme disease. But we got the pilot program done. And that pilot program is now a full program, is still there today. It was, it would take longer to do the culling, doing a bow and arrow type program, but it was the only way I could build a consensus. And, uh, been in the process of doing it. Uh, that first season, I think they averaged about, uh, 40 deer that year. That next season, we got to about 100. And it's building on that, and that was the only way we could ever build a consensus, and it was very contentious. Council was divided, the community was divided, but everybody agreed the pilot program was the way to go. Thought it wasn't too long with it.
Nope. Um, I don't know what all you saw today during your tour of the city. But, um, it may or may not have gone unnoticed that we have a serious blight issue here in Adrian. What would you suggest we do to resolve that problem?
I did do a tour of the community. And I can tell you, I've worked in about six, seven different places. I've seen far worse blight issues. But some of the things that I, when I did identify some of the areas that you do have concerns, you need to start looking at it more strategically. Identifying these certain hotspots that you want to put more energy into. I know you've approved a new code enforcement position, now I don't know if you're going in the process being the advertiser or not. But this person is going to have to be proactive about approaching it. Not just drive around, target the specific areas, identify them. One of the different things I find with code enforcement issues with blight properties is trying to find the landlord. I've had times when the landlords sometimes didn't even live in the country. And trying to go through the process of making, holding them accountable, taking them to court, and trying to get them to break the property up to code. So strategic thinking, identifying the properties that need to be addressed, and having a team of the code enforcement, the city attorney, the, uh, the city manager, and the council on board of these areas we're going to target, because it can get very political when you start targeting areas of landlords. And there's a possibility that could be someone there that you know, and you don't know at that time. So making sure it's a team effort, but targeting and being strategic by how you go about identifying those properties. And the final part of it is, if you get to the process, get to the end of condemning a property, understanding that you're taking possession of that property. That means you're responsible for potentially demoing that property. There are federal funds you can get for doing that, I've been through that process before. Once you clear the pro, clear the property, you're, um, responsible for mowing the property, keeping enough to make this and that on. And if you're going, if you begin to identify a certain area that you have a great deal of code enforcement, try to aim for it on a block by block basis if possible, because if you can get a block and condemn it and clear it out, that's something marketable to be built on, instead of doing spot by spot, because someone tends not to want to buy a lot and build on it when there are dilapidated structures next to it. So just some of the things I observed and identified.
Thank you.
Give us one example of when you realized an ethics problem within your organization, what did you do?
I was going through the process of, uh, hiring a new assistant, uh, parks and rec director. And he was an internal candidate, been there a long time, I had a great deal of faith in the confidence in it, we went through an interview process, and me and the director, we hired this person. But then it was brought to, um, my attention a week or so after I had made the offer to him by one of my council members, that apparently this person has a dilapidated property in our community. Code enforcement had been on him for months to bring the property up to code, uh, giving him sentences to appear before our court, and he ignored it. We confronted with it, he denied it at first. Part of this job being assistant director of parks and rec is you're responsible for the beautification of all our parks and all our green spaces. And it became a situation where I'm hiring you to do something that you're not doing personally. There was a news story on it. And I considered that an issue where I had to, um, to pull back the job offer. Because he misrepresented the facts about dilapidated property. And I considered that an issue where I had to, uh, to pull back the job offer, because he misrepresented the facts about dilapidated property to us. He ignored, uh, the code enforcement department when they sent him one or two different notices. He said he didn't get it because it was going to that house. Code enforcement, my code enforcement director said I had spoken to him about it once. He lied about saying that, even knowing that conversations are taking place. It was very difficult, he was a very likable person, and taking back somebody's promotion wasn't the easy thing I had to do, but it was an ethics thing. It was a public position, and he lied to us.
Thomas, what skills, experience, and wisdom do you bring in working with multiple groups of unionized employees?
Well, um, my first big time working with unions was when I was in Rock Island, Illinois, where I had the opportunity to go negotiate every one of the labor agreements from ASBA, ASBB, police management and, and, uh, working staff, firefighters. Um, and I gained a lot of experience working with the different unions. One of the things I identified when I got there where they had, we'd had a, uh, attorney that did helpful negotiations, been there twenty years, and it had become a very acrimonious relationship. So one of the things I had to do is I had to bring in a new negotiating attorney to assist me, start the process, beginning up, beginning to build trust. Also discovered that management and staff had a very good working relationship, so I seized on that to have an opportunity to work for something that normally we wouldn't do. Normally we had three-year labor agreements, and I took the bold step of trying to work on five. The heads in Chicago pushed back against that, "No, we want three, we want three," but I found if you build a five-year labor agreement, you have some separation between being back at the, um, at the negotiating table. Back to mission, you have the overflow of arbitration that could build into it, and we did it. We started with ASBA, and we built on ASBB, and we built on that over the next, uh, two years. And it was successful because, like I said, management and working staff had a good working relationship. I had to bring in a new attorney, didn't have the old scars built up. And I came in with a perspective, I'm about building trust and trying to working out a labor agreement that we can all agree on, but also take into account for the five-year agreement, I can better budget for the organization in the future. It had an impact on what you get in regards to cap improvement projects, trucks, equipment, and future raises. So that was, that was my experience dealing with, and it was something that hadn't been done in that area, and, and I didn't think we were going to get through it some different times, but, uh, I consider it a very successful venture.
Thomas, um, we're very proud of Adrian's institutions. If offered the position of city administrator, how we can become involved in those institutions?
Well, I, I've, I've been doing this a while, and I, my, my wife, my children understand, it's a very public position. I would, uh, I've always been active in Rotary in my last time in Rock Island, and when I was in Alaska, I was involved with the Lions Club. So I've become involved with that. That way you get the network of key decision makers in your community. You also get to become involved in, in, uh, public projects that benefit the community, separate from being the, uh, the city administrator. Being city administrator, I would also become involved in all the community events you're involved in. If you're doing a raise downtown, you require people to drive a car, I'll be driving a car, talking to the kids, I've done that before. If there are other community events going on, I attend those, uh, events, even though I may not have directly involvement with it. I participate in it, make myself be known, and I always carry a stack of business cards with me, where I put my cellphone number on it, so people can call me about any issue that comes up, or, uh, text me or any issue that may come up. I have an open door policy where citizens want to walk in, if I'm available, I try to meet with them and address their concerns. I've found that if I can address that citizen's concern at my door, that's one less person that's coming to council meeting confronting you with something that may not necessarily be a policy decision, but they don't know the difference. So being, um, twenty-four seven, being involved in public activities, being involved with Rotary, and I found out through someone that you have Rotary here, so I'd be involved with Rotary, and making myself visible, and having the name Thomas Thomas, so you don't forgive it.
Thomas Walton, um, what intrigues you about serving the city of Adrian? What gets you the most excited?
When I first got the, um, the brochure, I was, um, I was very pleased by the commitment to you, to check your downtown, keeping it revitalized. Trying to, a college community, I've worked in those types of communities before. That brings a higher level of people engagement and wanting to get things done. And then, uh, I can't remember who it was, somebody posted a YouTube video, it was about two or three years old about Adrian. And he, he did like a walkthrough of your community, the downtown area, went down to your lakes, and I was very intrigued by that. He talked about the history, the heritage, and that sparked my interest too, how you've taken care of all the buildings down here and keeping things so clean and, and string focused on strategically improving things, trying to build it more residential, and not doing high-end, low-end, but green quality, affordable residential living to your community. And I had the opportunity to watch some of your council meetings, and I saw the level of camaraderie that you have working together, work as a team, and, and even when you, uh, disagree, you agree to disagree, but you find a way to keep moving forward. I've been in places where it gets to a point they don't want to, uh, agree on things, and councilmen say, "I want to talk to you separately, I don't want to meet with him." And building that up is, building that relationship back up makes it hard on me. So, just a few of the things I observed. Now, during my time driving around today, meeting the, uh, the employees, everybody was engaged telling me about what they do, and how they like working here, and what they want to do to continue to improve things. I'm at the fire station, he's breaking all the equipment to show it to me, and all the improvements that working on, and showing me the EMS calls and the numbers and the revenue that got, the first year doing this, and I asked a few questions, and I've dealt with that type of EMS service, he knew the answers, and I was just the assistant. So, the engagement, I didn't meet one person that didn't like working here, and I've been in places like that before. They complain they don't like working here, but I'm just staying here till I get my pension. So that engagement is important, it'll help me get through that learning curve if I get this opportunity. So just a few of the things.
Thomas, how do you approach professional development for both yourself as well as other city leaderships?
Well, um, first thing, first thing I do is I make sure it's budgeted for continuing education. If you have someone in code enforcement, make sure they have the opportunity to keep getting their certifications. Budget for that. Don't put them in a situation where they're not prepared. Continuing level of, uh, to, to, continuing management opportunities, certification. Personally, I'm a member of the ICMA. I go, I, in Illinois, I was a member of the Illinois City County Management Association. I came to Michigan, I'd be a member of the municipal management association, and I'd go to those meetings, network, find out what other managers and communities around here are doing that works in Michigan that may not necessarily work in other places I've worked in. So me doing that networking and meeting other managers and becoming involved in those types of things. But the staff, the directors, continuing education, giving them the opportunity to advance when those opportunities come arrive, come, become available, and they can't do that if they're not prepared. And also let them know that I'm interested in what they're doing too, so that's, that's part of the process as well. I learned a little bit of that today. All of them want to do good work here, and all of them want to be engaged, and I see as a win for both of us. I'll answer the question.
You did, thank you.
Thomas, can you, uh, give us a situation where you've had a serious disagreement with your governing board, and how that disagreement evolved?
I've had a few. I think one of the toughest was during my time in Macon, Georgia, where I interviewed for the job. I knew they were in some very tough, uh, financial strengths. But when I got there that very first week, I, um, met with the finance director, and, uh, I saw the gravity of our situation. We were making payroll through tax participation levels. That's the level of how bad it was. And at that time, I knew I would have to take, my whole ninety-day plan was out the window. I had to make some tough financial strategic plans. That is when I got with the HR director. Luckily I had someone who'd been HR director, been in the organization, uh, thirty years, knew her position, knew about the organization. I brought the department directors together, and I told them that we're at a situation where we're going to have to begin to identify positions that we can right-size. That's the level of, of, level of situation that we were in. I, uh, informed the, uh, the mayor and the council, and, and more to the contention of, I had, uh, fifteen council members who were very partisan, from the left to the right, about, "We can't, we can't do enough, and we need to cull back what we do and do these basic services." And they identify as Republican and Democrat, and, which in my career, I never dealt with how a street could be a Republican, Democratic issue. And so I worked with the department directors, we identified positions that we could do without, that would not, would not have an impact on the services that we were providing. It, it, it wasn't impacted, it wasn't having an impact on the, on the public safety or the public works, because we were, we had vacancies in those departments that we couldn't fill even then, and I didn't want to have an impact on that. We made the cuts to administrative positions, where I told directors, you know, you're gonna start, there's a vacancy here, you haven't been able to fill it, we're sweeping it, you're gonna start making your own copies. I never could understand that mentality anyway, because the most part, I tend to schedule my own meetings, and I have no problem making my own copies and, and working with directors to do the PowerPoint presentation, because that's how I learned, prepared for it, and, and brainstorm about how to make things better. And by the time we got ready, we right-sized by, uh, a hundred positions. The second stage is we had to make some changes to our health insurance plan. We, um, we had people that, uh, that had retired that between the gap of retirement before they could go on, uh, Medicare, they were still on health insurance plan. And I had to help them move over to Medicare Plan B. And, and, and mind you, that was all during the time of the, uh, of the, uh, the beginning of Obamacare. So I was able to get them grandfathered in before Obamacare went into effect. Another thing I had to do is I had, uh, spouses, I had to tell the employees, "If your spouse has insurance available at their other job, they need to take that insurance to save us money." That was a carve-out that I pushed out there, and that wasn't very popular as well. We began to put in incentives. You're getting incentive cuts on your, um, your medical insurance if you sign a pledge about no smoking, no tobacco uses. We did some mandatory fiscals to help give bonus points to people dealing with, people with high blood pressure, things of that nature. So those are the things we did, and we saved substantial amount of money with our health insurance plans over the next one or two years. And with that savings over that first two years of health insurance plan, we saved like three billion dollars, and that was, that was me able to do something I hadn't been able to do. I was able to do a new pay plan for our police officers. We were losing, even though we were the biggest community, because we're a community of a hundred thousand in Macon, but all those suburban communities around us were selling our officers because they could pay more, and we were bleeding officers. I was able to implement a new pay plan where we were able to not only retain officers, but we began to start adding more new officers back, because we were able to be competitive again. So that was probably the most toughest time. I had a split council not wanting to do it. I had council members thinking with that right-sizing was going to impact the services that we'd be delivering. It got a lot of attention from the county, from the media. I took, uh, took a lot of hits. I had, we had meetings about making those changes, pushing firefighters off the Medicare Plan B. I had firefighters coming by, not very happy with me. But I was trying to save the city from becoming insolvent, and that was the toughest thing, toughest first year of my career.
Thank you.
Thomas, what experience do you have with fostering intergovernmental relationships?
I have had the opportunity to negotiate, uh, quite a few, uh, regional government agreements. During my time in Georgia, they have a state law that says, "If possible, between local governments, counties, or cities, do everything you can to not have duplication of services." So one of the things I had to do is I would have to negotiate when I was, uh, with, uh, Dority County Assistant County Manager. I negotiated with the cities, with the city about, um, we contract out recreation services from them. We contracted out fire services from them. They contracted out EMS services from us, and we went through those types of things where, where even though we weren't being consolidated, we were being functionally consolidated. And we negotiated out different agreements, how the pay plan would work, what we paid them for, providing those services to what they would pay us, and it saved both of us a lot of money. And I did that when I moved to Macon. Macon, the county contracted our fire services from us, and like, for instance, they wanted to add a new fire station, because they're doing some development on the unincorporated area. I'd have to negotiate out what they would have to pay us regarding building out a new fire station, the additional employees, and we saved money doing that. And, uh, I think, I wish, uh, when I left, I, I found a lot of other states don't push that type of functional consolidation. But again, inside of the services they're bringing, they're providing, and they gave them inside the services we're providing.
Why are you a good fit for Adrian?
Well, I think I'm a good fit because I've, uh, I bring a wealth of experience, I think it could be an asset to your organization. I've had the opportunity to, uh, drive around and, and, and look at the community and see the city employees, and I like the community, and, uh, and I want to work here. I have the, uh, the team building skills, interpersonal skills, and I have the experience of, of making enough mistakes of trying to avoid new mistakes here. And I think also that I see the potential of this community and the things you're doing here. And I think I could be an asset to helping you grow for the next five to ten years, right along of here, to continue to build on that. You have the colleges, you have the, uh, you have the, um, light industrial, you have the growing residential. I mean, gosh, I've, I've, uh, I looked at, only for houses for sale, and they were gone in a minute. Couldn't find anything to rent. So you've got an incredible retention thing, and where you're located, it just adds to it. You can build on it. So just a few of the things, I think I'd be a good fit for here, and I have experienced building on some of those things. And I'll, and I'm hoping, having a team that works together, I can learn from you, things that work here, things you'd like to see done.
So I'll go off the list now, because, uh, so in your first interview, Thomas, um, you mentioned dealing with pension struggles in other communities for which you've worked. Can you speak about specific strategies you've employed to combat in lower unfunded liability?
Well, uh, in, uh, Rock Island, I can't remember what our percentage was. It wasn't as high as yours. I think it was, uh, forty-five or fifty. And some of the things we tried to identify was, we had to go in and try to, uh, refinance our payment plan. Try to meet with them how we can, um, restructure it, pay it out over a longer period of time. Secondly, we had to make some tough choices about capital projects and how we want to go about, uh, paying for things. One of the things we had in Rock Island was, uh, we had a casino. And, uh, the casino, um, was, uh, was generating about, um, I think at the time I lived there, about, about five million a year for us a revenue per the agreement with the casino owners. And I saw, as time goes on, that, that, that casino money was being, um, sucked away from, by all things that capital. was being sucked away from battle, things like capital improvement projects. I set a policy where the revenue from casino money can only be used for capital projects. And that freed up a lot of money so we could be, that could be more strategic about a five year capital improvement plan. By doing that, inversely, it did free up some things regarding our general fund dollars. And this is where the part where the five year labor agreements helped us. Projecting out, we saw savings, knowing what our payments are gonna be. There's gonna be no, nothing here for the increase. It's gonna be two and a half this year, or three. We were to reject our revenues. That freed us up to restructure our pension payment plans and also to catch up on some payment plans. Think about the time I left there, I think we maybe got maybe another ten percent catch up. But it's a long detailed process, but you have to look at so many different pots of money. How are you gonna restructure, how are you gonna pay it out? We had a pretty same similar problem in Macon, but I, I left there three years for, uh, for Rock Island, so I never got that far enough into how to deal with their pension plans.
Ask this question both candidates, kind of my own question, so, um, I'm a business owner, I go from, my other business, I had three employees. I had the business of one is over forty. Um, one of the things that, that I learned in, in, in the position of the CEO of my company is that we've always done it this way. You're gonna have a different perspective for it to be our administrator. How would you handle, once you dig your feet in and say six months, you're on the road, you feel that some things weren't followed, some policies weren't followed, um, whether it be a city commission policy, whether it be just regular city policies, how would you handle that, knowing that, that it's your job to reset the vision and your job to carry it out? How would you, how would you handle things that sometimes, you know, when people say that we've always done this way, well, sometimes just because you already done that way doesn't mean it's the right way. So how would you handle, um, if you found out, if you fully found out that policies, some policies weren't being followed by your predecessors?
Well, I mean, it's, I, I've found that every elected person, even though they may agree or disagree at times, you're all running to do good work for your community. And what I do is if I identify something that I've had experience in other places that I think has worked better, I first I go to the, to the departments that is impacted and talk to them about it. Just in case I may be missing something in my, in my analysis. And then we brainstorm and I show them these examples of things I've seen done in other places and things we may need to a different policy change, how we want to approach doing something. And if they think it's a good idea, I'm open to bring it to the council to have a discussion about it. Give you an example, um, when I was in Rock Island, we did, uh, billing for a water bill every three months. So it became a situation where people would get that bill after that three months. Then you gotta go through the system, there's any kind of errors in it. You ain't gotta worry about trying to pay that three month bill. And sometimes people are living paycheck to paycheck and they, they forget about stuff sometimes. And so there was a section of town that was hit the hardest, that third, on that third cycle. And I knew it because my door, my back door was right here in the, the front, the front counter where people were paying the bills. I knew it was that day, when the people gathering the money. So I came up with an idea about looking at our payment plan, about trying to switch it from month to month. See if that can be done. Result, you can't be done because it's, it's designed to, to only recycle out every three months and everything. But one of the things I did when I got there, I found out a IT director, wasn't a director, he was working on the HR department. And there, and I found out in one meeting, he subbed in for the H, HR man director when he was on vacation. I don't think he's on IT department anymore. So he had a wealth of knowledge about looking at the system and how to jerry-rig it to do a monthly billing cycle. So people can have an idea, or they pay it on a monthly basis. It would be a complete change in our policy. I have some council members who will afford because they like to have you paying a month, you know, getting off and paying month to month. I had some other, um, council members didn't like that big radical change because they liked that billing cycle because that they could, they, they got their quarterly reports from the finance director. They knew that money was in there before that report came out. And so it made it harder for them to keep track of it. So we tried it out and we found out that people got on a better cycle of paying their bills, a percentage of defaults went down. There was always gonna be some people who can't pay their bills, but the defaults went down a great deal and that was very helpful to us. It was a big change how we did something. It didn't cost us a great deal of money. IT director figured out a way to go in and fool the system into kicking out a sort of a, a one month paper bill without making any changes to the system. And it was, it was successful. That was the big policy change too.
Thomas, can you give us an example or just describe maybe your philosophy on how you build culture or nurture culture in the workplace? And then along that vein, what are your methods for addressing employees that are detrimental to that culture?
Well, I've, uh, I've used something called Performance Pro, probably for the last sixteen years of my life. It's a tool I use where I give goals to every department director that we work on, on an annual, that I use to evaluate them. And we, it could depend on if it was a, if it was a public works director, he has some capital projects. If it's a police department, it could, could be in regards to policing techniques, things of that nature. And it's very transparent. Department directors know what each director's goals are. And you're on a monthly basis, you're being evaluated and looking at it and seeing things we can work on to improve on it and things we can, things we can do to make things better. And I evaluate them on an annual basis based on that. It's transparent, there's, there's, there's no, um, subjectivity about it and there's no, there's no favoritism. And it keeps everybody on track because when they're going, you're having those monthly meetings where you're talking about the different goals, everybody sees what everybody's working on. And there are times something comes up where a department director can assist another department director because they know something about something or know they, they can help them. That's the team priority that you're building there. Because one thing I found in the place I worked in, I found sometimes department directors are working in silos. They tend to, this is my house, this is what I'm working on, this is what I'm doing. And found that sometimes they don't interact with other directors. Well, we had this group of something three years, so I just avoid that person. So that's a good way to break down those silos too. Finally, it's also a great tool for me as well because something I think I missed in my first interview, about try to have an annual retreat with mayor and council. Try to build on what your vision is for the city on an annual basis. And try to work you through that and see how you can vote and identify things that helps me. Those annual goals from department directors can be affected by the policy decisions that you make at annual goal. Some of those things may not be possible, but I can make those things work. That's a good way of communicating between the elected body, between department directors, between the managers. So those are some techniques I've used. And it's also a good way of sorting out if you have some people who just don't want to do anything. When I was, uh, in a position, I don't want to give names, I had a director who fought goal setting. Uh, thought goal setting was, uh, unrealistic. And other directors was doing, getting the goals together. And finally, after going back and forth with this person over setting goals, this person chose to take him to the job someplace else. He chose not to be strategic in goal setting, he chose to leave. I was gonna work with on it, but he thought, well, I'm too busy doing this to, to set goals and everything. Where every other team member is doing that and working on his group. He chose to take another job and leave. Also, goal setting is used as, uh, as evaluating department directions at the end of the year. You find out things you can need improvement on. Most of the time, department directors achieve those goals. There are times when department directors don't and I put them on a corrective action plan for the next three months. Try to bring them back where they need to be. And sometimes when they can't, we have a parting of the ways. So it's a way of, uh, giving people out of their silos, working as a team, but also using an opportunity to sort out people who don't want to think beyond just their departments or beyond just, um, how to fix them personally. You're thinking about not only just the departments, but you think about the city, the community.
My difficulty right now is I've got more than one question.
Oh, sir, sir?
I, I would say my difficulty right now is figuring out which of the three questions I've written down I want to ask. Well, let's, okay, let me start with customer service. I think the majority of our employees like their jobs, are serious about their jobs and want to provide our, our citizens good customer service. But there are some who don't and one of the biggest complaints that I hear is that City Hall is not a friendly place. You've been at City Hall, you've seen it's a, it's a big monolithic cold environment. So people begin to come in there and are uncomfortable to begin with. Unless we have a welcoming staff, um, that doesn't help the situation. So, um, and I can tell you from my own experience, before I was elected, it was a cold place to be. As soon as I got elected, like magic, all of a sudden people were friendly to me and I got better customer service. Uh, but that being said, what could, what would you do to improve the customer service of everybody in the building? Whether they interface directly in the public, uh, public or not? Because I've always looked at it from a standpoint of whether you're with, you know, talking to a citizen or you're talking to another employee, you're each other's customers, even if you're just another employee.
Well, I've, uh, I've done customer service training be- before with employees. Another example of Rock Island, the, the place where people interacted most with city employees when it came to being a water bill. And we put all our frontline people who work at those counters, dealing with the money, dealing with, interacting with people, dealing with their stress over not having the money, dealing with shut off, shut off power. We shut off water bills, claiming your water meter is broken. We put them through a great deal of customer service training to deal with that level of stress dealing with citizens. And I discovered that they hadn't really been through any in a very long time. And that was very helpful. So when we did inside of customer service, my first focus was the people who was a frontline dealing with the, uh, with the citizens. And there were some secondary customer service training that we did with employees who worked in the backend, didn't necessarily have direct, that we may, may develop with them. So my main focus was always the frontline people and putting them through that training, bringing somebody in, train them, even knowing through sort of mock, dealing with somebody who was under, who's very belligerent, who's very, um, and sometimes can be very threatening. Another thing we did is we had just all those buttons. Because we did have some people who got to the point where, you know, they didn't want to take no, we had to push the button. Having a director, a supervisor within had customer service training to know when to intervene, to take that person away from that front desk and take them over to a room where you can close the door and have that one-on-one. Because it's not only disrupting the employees, disrupting everybody in line. So knowing when to de-escalate the situation and getting them on the side and see how you can brainstorm on things. I discovered during that time that we did make some mistakes regarding billing. And I would inform council every time I had to make corrections to, to water bills. And I did that sometimes. And most of the time, people coming in are, they just want to be listened to, they want to be understood. And you're right, coming into, um, City Hall can be a very intimidating place. You don't know where the services are being provided. You don't know how to get to them. And you may need somebody to not just tell you, we don't, we don't provide it here, but tell them it's over there. And so that frontline customer service would be my main for, my main focus at the beginning.
Thank you.
I would like to know, Thomas, what, I know that you've been, you know, researching Adrian and watching our, our meetings and such, but what do you see as things that need to be improved upon here in the city of Adrian? What, you know, where are weaknesses at here and, and what would you do to try to improve them?
Well, Ralph, the bad eye, I do, I do see that you, you, you do have a housing need that's there. And I haven't delved deep enough to see what long-term plans you're working on to address those issues. Walking, driving concerning communities, I did see some blight issues and I don't know how strategic, I know you've identified the, the position you're gonna add, there hasn't been, haven't been hires yet because I talked to your quarter first person. How are you gonna about doing that strategically? That's something that you're gonna have to deal with. Yeah, the ongoing issues of, uh, policing, you're, uh, you're down one position right now, but, um, I've heard you've had some issues, you know? And how you go about doing that, I need to know, find out what the policing strategy is and how you're approaching doing those types of things. Just a few of the things I observe. And, and, and what'll help me a great deal to peel back things is Daniel Gold with all of you. Because you, you guys, I, I suspect, and not to age anybody, I've been between all of you, probably have a hundred or something years of experience in this community to tap into. And I want to learn from you and you guys to learn from each other about where you want to set your priorities are going forward through the year. And I learned that too. I hope I answered it. And, and that's only the top level. I'm sure I missed a lot, there's probably more I could tell you if I had more time.
Your hundred years is way off.
When I was going to a hundred, she was looking at me like, easy, easy, keep it low.
My question is kind of to piggyback on what you were just talking about. So what I'm looking for in this position is stability. It's been a little bit of a rocky road for this position. And I understand that some of that is due to the position and people move around. Most everyone in this room was born here, so I don't know where you were born, but I, I've been here for twenty-eight years. I mean, we're loyal to Adrian. If we moved away, we came back, um, you've moved around a lot. You were talking just recently about your three years at Macon, Georgia. It sounded like you were making great progress. And then you moved out of there to, uh, Rock Island. Talk to us about all of the moves that is concerning.
Well, I left, uh, Macon to go to Rock Island because at that time, uh, my, my wife's parents are from Illinois. And my, uh, my father-in-law was ill and she wanted to, it was possible to be near him. My eldest daughter had been accepted into college at the Columbia College of Chicago. And, uh, the consultant Gov HR, uh, knew, you know, contacted me about this opportunity. It was a nice sized community, it was on a river. Dority County was on a river, there was a lot of similarities, different types of things we were dealing with. And see if I was interested in it. It was an opportunity to begin within hour to where they were. And, and through hours of where my daughter was. So it was a personal decision, that professional opportunity. And I, and I veiled myself of it and that's why I left. I did five years in, uh, in Rock Island, you know? It, it became a real political opportunity over economic development project. I chose to leave the organization. Mayor, mayor and council members tried to talk me out of it, but it was a philosophical change where we were ninety percent built out and we needed to continue to try to do things in regards to retail development. Because other communities around us had benefited from it and we were not benefiting from it at all. And we had to continue to do things to take advantage of that. And we had done some things, we brought in some new retail during my time there, but we need to continue to push forward to it. And we had some new council members got elected coming aboard, just wanted to slow down. And then when the mayor says, I'm not ready for reelection again, that was sort of my thing where I, it was, I couldn't, it was, it was the wrong, and now, right now, they're dealing with the issues of, of, um, no retail, if had the impact of coronavirus, with the casino being closed period of time, that, that looking, they're probably bringing in probably three million dollars of revenue for the years out because the place has been closed. And you have to begin, you have to, you have to continue to find new revenue sources to do things. And I was working on things where we had a, the arsenal that was there. Trying to work on, working on taking over their, uh, utilities. And that was an opportunity for revenue sources. Big ideas, things we had to continue to push on and studying and rest of the council members who just wanted to, you know, not, not push further on things and I thought it was the best. was the best that I move on there. But if given, and before that, I was in Dorie County, I was there for six years. I looked for opportunities where every year I assess myself, if the mayor and the council continue to be, you know, impressed with my work, I continue to stay. I left on Alaska for personal and professional reasons, my wife and children and I, and we left in good standing.
Okay, thank you.
And that was the anomaly.
Having never worked in the state of Michigan, which you're familiar with, Michigan laws as they pertain to the local governments, excuse me, and given your experience in multiple states, what has been your strategy for acclimating to different guidelines and reporting requirement procedures dictated by other state laws?
Well, coming here, I would do what I did when I first went to Rock Island, Illinois. I learned a lot of the legal state statutes, meeting with the attorneys, guidelines and things you had to follow, working with the clerk, going over different orders and guidelines that are very unique to us, that we have to, we have to do this on this day, we have to file this on this day. And I learned those different guidelines about how we have to approach things. I learned the budget process and times, timetables we had to make. Learning union negotiating things, I did it for the first time. That was a big learning curve, but that would help me here, because it wouldn't be the same level, but I'm sure there'd be some differences. Michigan, you have some issues regarding the state in regard, the arbitrage to come down and have a lot of latitude and power over making decisions and, you know, and what you can do. And even though, I don't think you'll have that problem, because you're, you're being very successful in navigating through the downturns that has occurred. But I still have a learning curve, learning different guidelines in Michigan, but I proved that I can learn those guidelines through my tenure in Alaska, going to the state legislature in Juneau, doing, going to DC to lobby for different fishery projects that we need to have funding on, and I'm a quick study. And also build a team. If someone has a knowledge and ability, I learn from them. And if they have an initiative, particularly lead of somebody, give them up to the shine as well.
Thank you. I had two questions, and Commissioner Watson took the second one.
You're welcome. So yeah, so I have anything else? I'm all set, thank you.
Is that on to me?
Yeah.
At your first interview, Thomas, you talked about zero-based budgeting.
Yes.
And I have some experience with that. Where and, where did you do that, and what was your success level on that?
It was, it was a combination of zero-based and performance-based budgeting.
Okay.
I learned that when I became Assistant County Manager in Dorie County. We had a county administrator who, very conservative, if you dropped a penny, he could put his foot on it and tell you which side is on. And working with him for six years Assistant County Manager, I learned how to build budgets from the ground up. And I mean, he was old school. We don't have time during the week, we, during the budget process, we were there on Saturdays and Sundays, you know, where George had the church, you know? And we were doing that, and we built it up from the ground up. We didn't line out on my line item, we looked at projects, and we had directors explaining what that project meant and why we're going to fund it. And that's what I meant, building it from the ground up. And that's why I learned it. It was a lot of hard work, but it was a team effort, and that's how we did it during that time. And I learned, I learned that, learned that from him. And Dorie County to this day is debt-free.
Thank you.
We're getting close to the time, and I want to still give him time to ask those questions and give a closing statement, but do you have any other questions? Okay, well, so I'm going to ask you, do you, what questions do you have for us?
Well, I think I asked a little bit about what you're looking for in a manager, and I think you've already answered those types of questions for me. But I can tell you, if I was given this opportunity, I will bring stability to the organization. And I will bring, I will bring calm to the organization. I've been in places where I went in and elected bodies, and it's gotten so bad, employees are contacting me because they don't feel they can go to the director or to go to HR. And I build that to make sure that just doesn't happen, so I have an open door, so that doesn't happen anymore. So I think stability is important, I bring that to you. I bring experience to you, 25 years of experience, working from the bottom as a budget analyst to a city manager. And I also bring transparency, not sharing information with one person, I'm not going to be sharing with everybody, and making sure we have those meetings to discuss issues, helping to be successful as elected people. So I think I've had a great deal of my questions answered, and I hope I've been able to answer all of your questions. And as we, if I get as opportunities, we get to know each other better, I learn more. There are pet projects, if you, if one of you have, you know, want to have improved your community, and hopefully I have proactive to help you, help you build to solve it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. How does everybody want to do it? It's not my decision, it's everybody's.
I have to hear the question.
When the second interview is over, are you all, are you guys going to allow the candidates to make a, while you discuss, or should we watch on Zoom? Should I have Mr. Thomas speak in the conference room out there, and bring Mr. Elliot in, and then the rest of you wants to come back in? How would you move forward?
In my opinion, it's a public meeting, they're welcome to come back in, they'll stay, they've already been in here, but if they want to go on their way and watch from Zoom, that's fine, I mean, it's not going to affect my deliberation.
During the interview, I don't.
Yeah, during the interview, I'm not, no, yes.
She's, she's just saying after he wants to wait, there's an area where he could wait.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question now on the agenda. After the second interview, the agenda says we're going to have our discussion. Are we actually going to have our discussion before public comment, or are we going to listen to what the public has to say before we have our discussion?
Normally, you would have your discussion, then have public comment, and then make your motion after, so you could hear both. Does that work for you, Commissioner Goss?
No, it works fine. I just want to make sure that we have an opportunity to hear from the public before we make a final decision.
All right, let's try to help fire.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Can we take a break?
Yeah, yes. Greg, it isn't that, I was like, Greg, it's a public meeting. I'm not going to slap you, but I want to make sure, I don't want to be the one to... But it is a public meeting, it doesn't. No way!
Face-to-face what?
Learning.
You and C. Chapel Hill had already done it, and I was worried they were going to start doing it. Oh, no, that's really sad.
Corwin just had a good thought, just won't tell them.
So since they shut down face-to-face, are they going to let them live there, though?
I have no answers to those questions, all this sounds like a headline.
Hmm.
Twitter.
I've eaten three bars, so I won't eat that stuff. I was learning, I grabbed it on my way out, and I was like, I'm going to be hungry, and I will take something bad, or try to grab something, if I don't take a three bar with me. I will cheat. I went to a sauce table, so.
Yeah, I'm just laughing. And, you know, let's do this, why do we have four masks this time?
Don't wear them, I'm not reporting you.
Well, I watched you, you took yours off.
Well, I took it off to get a drink, and then I forgot.
Left it off.
I forgot. But then I looked, and yours was off, and I was like, well, but I took it off to get a drink, and I forgot. But I looked it up, and it does say you have to wear them inside a public building, but it also says...
If more than 10, no?
No, everybody. But it also says, there's one exception that says, if you're communicating with someone who is deaf or hard of hearing, or it's essential to see their mouth while you're communicating. So I'll let you guys...
Communications.
Yeah, I'll let you guys slide it out.
I don't know what's going on at Allen.
We're working on it.
This is your standard, I can't, this is your speed, this is your spot. I'm running through the restroom.
I would have asked you, but you weren't there, so I went straight to you.
So hurry, you got two minutes.
You know who had owned that lot?
Did you see that Allen Reddy?
I'm sorry?
You know who had owned the lot? Is it Jason that is Jim Keane?
Oh, really?
But he would sell that, and so then, you know, Glenn had talked to him about it, but it's unclear whether he's taken it back.
Or if he's in foreclosure or whatever.
Yeah, I think he's in the process of foreclosing the land contract.
We had a conversation at, about this summer, she did not know that Minnie was my mother.
Where's the daughter, is that?
Uh-huh. Yeah? She's like, what? I say, yeah, I own the yard, I've known the family for a long time, and she was laughing, she didn't know that.
It's a little, little stuffy in the anteroom. Are you trying to, trying to slap me, or?
I don't want you to get too comfortable. It's all, it's mind games, Greg, it's mind games.
I hear you.
It was really hot in my office, too.
We all decided, or most of us decided to take our masks.
Signing the Johnson control contracts today, new air conditioning's coming, new ventilation's coming.
Yeah.
Sorry, we are not running as heavily.
It's close enough.
I'm just kidding.
Exactly 6:05.
Yes.
Are you familiar with the comedian Ron White?
I don't know, I have a story, but since you don't know, we have a story.
Okay. Well, welcome, Greg.
Thank you.
Since you have been working at City Hall, I don't need to go around and do anything since you know us all. So we will just head straight into the interview.
Okay.
Do we want to proceed the exact same way as last time? Sorry, Commissioner Watson?
How do you find ways to lead when opinions are very different and sometimes polarized?
Well, I think you have to gain the respect of your, of your staff, whether or not they happen to exactly agree with you. I think by being an honest broker with them, being accessible to them, by, by being out there, talking to them, understanding what they're doing, seeing how they do their job, you know, that you can have differences of opinion without, you can disagree without being disagreeable if somebody wants that. So that's kind of my philosophy. I think if they feel like I'm genuine, then they're going to respect those differences.
Thank you.
Greg, you can take off your mask if you want, if you feel better.
Well, you know, on the one hand, I have a bunch of pimples on my nose from wearing the mask. You know, if it's easier for you, I'll take it off.
It's a sure call.
I'll take it off.
Yes. Okay, so I know you're well aware of the fact that we have a blight picture here.
From pretty long ago.
Okay, so my question on this topic revolves around commercial blight, and I know we paid a lot of attention to residential blight, but we have, in my opinion, a large number of buildings in the city that we need to take some sort of action on. Can you tell me what you think and what you would intend to do if we appointed you to the permanent position?
Well, I think we have been doing that. So I would point to Family Dollar as a successful example of that. That was a store where it was literally rainwater leaking in amongst the shelves as people were trying to shop in there, likewise with Adrian, our building next store. Less successful with that so far, but we're still working on that. Family Dollar, however, is reopened, it's reopened after new roof, and after mold testing and remediation, placement on the rotted ceiling tile, so on. Next example I would cite is the mall. May be seen how that's going, but in terms of pressure on, if you will, the, the sort of deadbeat owner that has allowed it to deteriorate to that condition, that has certainly been maximized. There's one remaining tenant there, which is Dunham's. Dunham's happens to be a separate situation, but has had to do some things physically to separate their space from the rest of the mall. The condition in the rest of the mall is atrocious. There's mold growing, there's more mold growing in the J.C. Penney part than there is in the part we most recently condemned, but as you know, we recently condemned the occupied portion of the mall because it was unsafe and unfit for the population generally to be at. So we've tried, and those are two examples, there are other examples that we've addressed through notices and pending code enforcement, flight enforcement actions, particularly the, the building there next to Main Lane, which already has a very substantial tax lien on it from works, work that's been done to shore up the wall in the past, and so, you know, there's no one right size for every situation. You know, in that case, we're aware that that tax lien is there, and that, you know, it's probably not going to get paid off at the time that the next tax bill comes due. So when the next tax bill comes due, we may well have a different, for that property, which will provide a different opportunity. I think you got to address each situation based on its facts, but to your point, you can't ignore commercial blight at all. I would go further to say that the, you know, the marijuana overlay that you've created provides an opportunity in that regard. You haven't seen it come to fruition in every case, but we reviewed site plans, now we are, that we are reviewing site plans for zoning exception permits, which all marijuana facilities are. We've been able to mandate site improvements that will, in each of those cases, where there's a new facility locating there, remediate the blight, blighting issues. You know, some look better than others, you can look at 1033 Lyle, which is, we call Brook Lodge, and that really looks sharp now, if you go by there. We've done, M. Gardens is in the north end of Jim Brown's big building there that's between Logan and Center, and where Lawrence intersects perpendicular on the west side. You'll see that end is substantially cleaned up, we dropped a little boarded-up building that was on that side of it as well. Bigger, better things are probably coming on the other two sides as those facilities fill in. But that's another component of the approach, is every time you get an opportunity, you get control of something at planning commission, you've got to make sure you're making improvements that bring it closer to conformity and ameliorate those blighted conditions.
I ask a quick follow-up to that, please. One of my concerns, though, and I agree that you've had some success, we have a number of abandoned factories on the east side. We've got Jefferson School, who's, has been empty for years and hasn't been addressed, or maybe it has, and I just don't know about it. and hasn't been addressed, or maybe it has and I just don't know about it, but the building is still standing. Can you comment on any of those situations?
Well, so Jefferson School, unfortunately, the county land bank owns Jefferson School, so you're going to have a hard time getting that. We thought we had any, we thought we had any, you know, so you watch for your opportunities. And we actually thought we had an opportunity with respect to Jefferson School because when one of those marijuana facilities that I mentioned, that's on the east side of Jim Brown's building there. Of course, Jim Brown had been the owner of Jefferson School, but one of those facilities wanted to use the parking lot across the street. And we said, ha ha, now you're going to address Jefferson School. Turns out, he retained ownership of the parking lot and the school itself, school building itself went back to the land bank. So that was missed opportunity, but got to pay attention to those opportunities, I would say. You know, code enforcement can do some things with respect to blighted industrial properties, weeds and, and, you know, peeling paint and, and broken fences and those kinds of things, but you can, you know, you're not going to make a huge difference until you get an opportunity like we've had with the reoccupancy of those buildings that provides a real opportunity to clean it up properly.
Thank you.
Give us one example of when you realized an ethics problem within an organization you work for. And what did you do?
Well, I mean, I've, I've encountered that in different ways in different settings, I would say. So my early career, when I was with, with Pittsfield, I had an employee. Well, we had a number of ethics issues, not on, not all under my purview, some of which resulted in arrests, but all of which were dealt with in a zero tolerance approach. You know, anything from suspension to termination in those cases. We, you know, and so in that setting, in the government setting, you know, honesty is essential. We're, we're stewards of public trust and you can't have that. Now, people's private lives are private, but when activities impinge upon their character as it relates to the job that they do or whether, where they occur on the job, that, you know, as I say, you have to have a zero tolerance policy. I have worked for some people in private sector who had challenges in that regard. You know, you can only, you know, in those settings, I obviously wasn't their supervisor, I worked for them either as an attorney or in one case I can think of as an employee. You know, you just have to keep your own nose clean. You can't allow yourself to be tainted by that.
So what skills, expertise and wisdom do you bring in working with multiple groups of unionized employees?
Well, again, you know, so first of all, I would say we have a very experienced HR person who has for years and years done our union negotiations substantially, so, you know. The burden is not necessarily going to be on the new administrator to do that. But I, I would go back to what I was saying before about being an honest broker, being out there accessible and known by the staff generally, including the, our, our unionized employees. Now, i- if they feel like you are the honest person, you are a person that they trust, you're going to do a lot better at the negotiating table than if you're a stranger to them or, or an authority figure to them. And so that's always been my approach. Yeah, I can remember, like growing up as a kid, my, my father was an engineer at a paper mill, but he was always on the bargaining committee for, for, for the paper mill because employees viewed him in that same way and that was the sort of the model for me. That if you're a person that they can relate to as a decent person and it's an honest person, then they're going to want you sitting at the table and you're going to be able to, it goes back to what we were talking about before, being, you know, disagreeing without being disagreeable. Your, you know, your opinions are going to be respected and you're going to be able to have that give and take versus somebody who gets the, gets the union's backup, then, you know, they don't want to, they don't trust you or don't want to talk to you.
Greg, we're very, we're very proud of Adrian's institutions. If offered the position of city administrator, how would you be something involved in those institutions?
Well, I mean, first and foremost, I would relocate here and make myself a part of the community as I would my own community where I live right now. I think it's more important as a city administrator to be out in public, to be engaged with those community leadership groups and all that I would, yeah, I'm not, I don't tend to be a joiner, but, you know, I am very willing to be a part of functions and am very happy to attend wherever I'm invited. And happy to have a, a long and busy day of, of people to meet and places to go and you know, that, that would be my approach. You know, I, I feel like we got to stay engaged with those groups that have done so much for us. I mean, we look, you know, you and I walked the Kiwanis Trail Extension last Friday with, with others. And, you know, that, that partnership that we've, and it's literally about to be a partnership that we've had with Kiwanis is so important to this community. The Trail Authority will just memorialize it, but it's been there for years and years and one of our signature assets is, is all for the, the work of the Kiwanis. And so, of course, you got to stay engaged with Kiwanis, stay engaged with the other service clubs as well as our, our colleges, colleges and college and university. You know, those, those are tremendous assets to our community and, you know, we were just talking the other day at DDA about how important it is to bring those young people on, you know, at a, you know, we've, we've added a, a couple of college people, people who recently graduated from the college into the DDA structure. One is a member, others doing some contract work, but, you know, it's so important to keep those people involved and engaged in the things that, that the public body, you know, largely is doing because that helps us retain talent in the community. And, you know, I, I mean, that's, to sum up, I guess, I, I, I just want to be a visible part of the community and, you know, where I'm welcome, I'll be.
Good, thank you. Greg, what intrigues you about serving city of Adrian? What gets you excited?
Ah, there's tremendous opportunities here for some of the reasons I've been talking about. But, you know, there, there, you've been able to accomplish things through public-private partnerships here. You have such a tremendous civic pride. Now, I think of projects like the Strongback and the Armory and then projects that are in the offing like the, you know, the potential to partner with the owners of the Hammond Building to redevelop that property and what that would do for that block. I mean, I'm a, I'm at my core a planner still, you know, and, and having a community with a traditional downtown is, is like the planner's dream, right? That's our ideal community, ideal structure for a community, walkable community, traditional downtown. And you, and Adrian has all those things plus the civic spirit that allows for those things to, to be redeveloped in spite of some tough times that the town has experienced over, over time. And so, to me, that's just a, an exciting opportunity. You know, I've been here just, just about one year, will be one year at the end of this month. And so I feel like I've kind of, you know, things are like starting to seem familiar to me, you know, and I don't even live here yet. You know, I'm going places by instinct and, and knowing my way around and taking alternate routes to get places and, you know, it's starting to feel like home. And so when it feels like home, you want to, you know, you're, you're really invested. I'm trying to, trying to make it a better place.
Thank you. Greg, take a look at this on both a personal level and, and your team or department leadership. How do you approach professional development?
Well, personally, it's the easy one, I guess. I, you know, I've, I've tried to engage in it as much as I can. I'm forced to as a planner, so I'm continuing to have requirements to, to meet. Oddly enough, as a lawyer, I'm not required to do that, but I've still available myself with those opportunities historically. You know, I've gotten kind of busy lately and, you know, the planning obligations are about all I can, can handle right now. But it's very, you know, I, you know, and so being that person who, who understands that and, and I would say back, you know, going back to before I was a lawyer, I always, I, I worked for a township, as you know, and I always went to the Michigan Township Association Convention every year and really looked forward to it. And then I always learned something there. There was always a session, you know, if you could find one session where you really had a aha moment and you took something away, that was, that was important. And so that informs my attitude toward professional development for staff. I want to, you know, we have tight budget here, of course, but I want to facilitate those opportunities wherever we can because if you, if each session you go to, you just learn one thing. You've learned one thing that you're going to apply and that's, that's worth it.
Thank you.
Greg, can you give us an example, now or before, when you disagreed with your governing board and how that disagreement evolved?
The governing board always wins, but.
That answer, I agree, yes.
I mean, I, I'm not here to have such a strong opinion that I, I need to, I need to fight with my boss about it. And my boss is, is you all, right? I'm here to give you the information you need to make an informed decision. So if I've done that, then, you know, I'm happy with your decision.
Thank you.
What experience do you have with fostering intergovernmental relationships?
Well, besides Trail Authority, we just negotiated. So, you know, I'm, I'm a unique candidate, obviously. I, you know, this is my next time in government after 20 years of being in the private sector. But I wasn't wholly in the private sector all that time because I, you know, as a planning consultant, I worked for governments and on behalf of governments. So we did have opportunities for, for doing that on behalf of clients, I can't think of an exact opportunity. And none jump right to mind. If I think way back to when I was at Pittsfield, originally we had a partnership with Ypsilanti Township on construction inspection. For several years, we shared, in essence, a construction inspection department. Over time, you know, it worked very well. I mean, and as you can imagine, the, the purpose of it is to, for us to jointly afford things that we otherwise couldn't have afforded because of the, you know, level of people that we had to have for, in those days, it wasn't as common to have contract inspectors like firms like you have now, SafeBelt and the kind of others that, that do that. And so that was a way for us to collaborate and do that. Ultimately, we outgrew that and it came full circle and we ended up, you know, contracting with other communities, City of Ypsilanti, for example, to, to do their work for them. But, you know, that's, you know, that's an example. I think you look for those opportunities where you can share a service that allows both of you to afford something that you couldn't otherwise afford. Had a few examples. I think we have an exciting one that we're about to embark on here. Those are the ones I'd like.
So Greg, why do you think you are going to Adrian?
Well, I'm, I'm here, so, you know who I am, I'm an old quantity. You know, I feel like I've worked successfully and accomplished things here since I, since I've been here. I feel like I hit the ground running, you know, so I've done interim for one, one month, it was one month yesterday. During that time, see, within the first 10 minutes, I signed a grant agreement, or a grant application, rather, to seek reimbursement for five, over half a million dollars in public service wages from April and May. The next week, we authorized hazard pay and sought reimbursement from that, from the CARESAC, these are CARESAC programs. We've got, kept the ball rolling and on the Kiwanis Trail Extension. We established the first social district and one of the first social districts in Michigan, probably one of the first half dozen social districts in Michigan. Just cut the checks today for the individual applications, signs should be up in a week and we'll have that up and running. You know, I think that's pretty good for, you know, the first month, you know, but, you know, harbinger of things to come, I would hope. You know, I'm a Michigan guy. Every job I've ever had has been in Michigan, most of them have been, you know, nearby here in southeast Michigan. I've flipped in Washington County since the eighties. You know, I like the area. I, I like this community. Like I say, I feel like I, it, it seems to me in any community that you come into is about a year-long learning curve. I'm at the end of that. I can hit the ground running if you offer me the opportunity.
Greg, you have a great resume. What previous job experience thus prepared you for a job as the Adrian City Administrator?
I would really say, though, the work I did with McKenna, oddly enough, which was planning consulting, but, you know. So Phil McKenna was founder of the firm who, who I hired in when I first, when he's no longer the owner of the firm. He sold, sold the firm to John Jackson, but he used to say, he would still say, I assume, that a year's experience at McKenna is like three years' experience in, in that government.
And McKenna did what?
Planning consulting, we're, we're mostly planners. We, we do building. We, they do building code inspections as well now. Branches offered that, but, and what he meant by that is, you know, is that first of all, it's an intense work environment, but also you are injected into and have experience with like a broad, broad range of communities. I've, I've had exposure to, I can't tell you how many communities in southeast, not just southeast Michigan. You know, some in northern Michigan, some in mid Michigan, even the one in Ohio. So being inside to one degree or another, all those different city halls or municipal buildings, because they're not all cities, villages and townships as well. It just gives you a perspective on how things are done in many different ways and in many different places that I, I think has been really valuable and I take it with me and having a lot of insights into different issues.
Good, thank you. Greg, you've been here in the interim job for a little over a month, like you said, accomplished, in my opinion, a lot of good things already. If you were fortunate to get this position and you started to get your feet wet, six months here, you're going to have to. and you started to get your feet wet six months here, you're half a little, you started to realize that some, maybe some policies aren't being followed that, because you guys, I mean, Nathan was, I mean, Commissioner, it's a busy job, so. Some of the previous commissions adopted some policies that, that may have made out of them enforced, right? So, so my question to you is, is how would you handle making sure some of those, some of those policies, that maybe it was supposed to be cracks or, or if there's any. I mean, I'm, I'm just hypothetically saying, how would you handle enforcing those policies, rolling back, or just looking at things from a different angle? Because a lot of times, you know, when you have new leadership comes in, it's a, it's a, well, we've always had this way. Well, just because you always don't know it, I mean, it's right way. Right? So, so how would you handle that learning curve? And then just, like, if policies aren't enforced, how, how would you handle dealing with that?
So I've already heard a few times, well, we've always done it that way. Not necessarily wanted to do it that same way. You know, I've had to strengthen my convictions in that regard. You know, i- if a policy has sort of lapsed, then I think it would be incumbent upon me to bring that back to the commission and determine whether or not that, that's still your policy, right? I mean, if it's still your policy, then we'll enforce that policy. But, you know, if, if it's fallen into disuse, maybe there's a reason for that. And we have to, you know, I think we got to analyze that and determine whether or not it's still valid in this, in this particular day and age.
Thanks. Greg, describe how you build culture, the methods you use for building culture and the methods you use for addressing employees that are detrimental to that culture.
I mean, everybody says I have an open door, but, you know, I actually mean that in my case. I, I've been so, sort of taken aback by how staff have just kind of come into the, you know, I've been sitting in the administrator's office mostly and, you know, they've come in there and it seemed like a comfortable sort of gathering place for people, no matter what their position is, that they feel welcome to come in there. And that's, that is a culture that I want to promote if, if I'm in that office permanently. I think that's very important. I, you know, and I've kind of touched on this in a couple of different, and in my response to a couple of different questions, to have that culture of openness. A leader, you know, isn't somebody, you know, and I think what, what you really want for this position is a leader, not a manager, but a leader. Manager is somebody who gets people to toe the line. Leader is somebody who inspires them and makes them want to follow where they're going. Has them in a position where they want to buy into the vision that they've got. You know, and, and my approach, to some degree, this comes out of my planning background, but I think it's my personality as well as to, is to want to collaborate, collaborate on things with not just my department heads, but with staff. And I would point to our work in addressing, you know, during this last month and addressing the transient population impacting our parks. You know, we've drawn on people from various departments, not all at the department at level, and they've all contributed ideas, very valuable ideas, to a multifaceted approach to that problem, which I think is already showing some benefit after a very short period of time. And so that's, that's the kind of culture that I want to create. You know, it's, it, it's a culture of buy-in as opposed to a lot of control, I would say.
Greg, I'm trying to have a three-part here. You mentioned, you described how you want to build culture in the culture that you want. What's your methodology or how do you address the people that, or the possible people that are detrimental to your culture, that, that, that don't want to work that way or are a closed door or are a silo? How, how would you address that?
That's right. I'm sorry. I forgot that part. Well, you know, we're, we're, our approach is informed by our personnel policy and, you know, we have to follow that in terms of how we address negative practices, you know. You know, but, so you got to utilize that and the tools that are in there, which are, are disciplinary tools, of course. And we've already had to do that some in this last month as well, as you may know. And, you know, you can, you can offer, you can, I mean, you, you try to win buy-in, but, you know, people can be disgruntled for their own reasons and unrelated to the, to the culture that you're trying to create. And so you give them, you know, you give them every chance to, to buy in through positive engagement and then counseling, but ultimately, if you're not achieving buy-in, the end result of that is separation.
Thank you. Greg, what would you hope to accomplish in your first hundred days and what's your long-term vision for the City of Adrian?
First hundred days, so we've had 30.
I'm not counting those.
I don't get credit for the first 30? Oh my God.
Reset.
No, I take all that stuff back. Well, you know, so I've already, I mean, to some degree, I've already done some of things. Yeah, I've, I've, I've tried to get out to all the city facilities. I haven't, I haven't made it to DPW and please spare me, please spare me in part because it was under quarantine, but, you know, so. But besides those, I've been out to all the facilities. I've, I've put a face with a name for most of the staff and, and that was, that would be one thing I would want to have in place right away. I want people to know who I am and know that I'm approachable and reachable. Yeah, I, I think just continuing the energy that we have behind some of the initiatives that I've been talking about. Obviously, we've got a lot of work to do with the comprehensive plan still. I, I don't want to disengage with that just because I'm not the community development director anymore. I think that's a citywide priority and I'd want to stay engaged with that. We got to implement our new processes for prosecuting flight violations. We need to hire our new code enforcement officer and that person has to fit that position and be a person who's going to have a home here for the long term. You know, those are, those are a few things that I would want to accomplish right away. You know, the rest of my priorities may be up to you all as, as, in terms of the things that you want me to accomplish. We got to continue, you know, we've made a nice step with the, with the transient housing issue, but that's only a Band-Aid on the, on the problem. I mean, we need to find more systemic solutions to that and explore those. That's something I want to keep the, the forward momentum on if I'm here long-term in this position. Sorry, what was the second part after the?
Your long-term vision for the City of Adrian. I'm talking about where do you want to be five years from now? Where do you want the city to be five years from now?
Yeah, I'd like to see us picking up redevelopment projects left and right. I know, I'd like to see us with rental housing looking, you know, a lot sharper than it does right now. Our vision for the new code officer is that that person will be devoted entirely to rental housing and can do those in a more vigorous way than has been the case where one person was trying to do both light and rental housing. So I think that's an important aspect and, and I want to see it pay the dividends that we're hoping for in terms of how that, you know. A thing I've observed about Adrian, which is somewhat anomalous, is that the cost of rental housing is relatively high in relation to property values in general. And to me, that means that it's the, that the social costs are not necessarily be, being passed on to those landlords, some of those landlords. In other words, you know, they're being allowed to rent out properties that are not in, in a condition to be rented out. I, I would hope that long-term, we're going to be able to alleviate that problem to a large extent and have decent rental houses. Find a rental housing is important, have plenty of rental housing, but it needs to be decent rental housing for the, for the population. You know, long-term, I want the downtown to continue to be a hub that is gathering place for the community as a whole. Not slip back. I mean, I'm told, I've seen it as it is, well, as it was, just prior to the pandemic, where it was really kind of happening place. I went to First Fridays this month. Quite a few people downtown in spite of the pandemic. You know, that's, that's going to be a challenge because some of our businesses are going to take a hit on account of the pandemic and are not going to survive. And so it's going to be a struggle to keep that, that energy downtown. And the energy downtown draws people from all sectors in the city and creates identity that's important to a community sense of identity that I think we want to foster long-term.
Thank you.
Well, I was going to ask you what your long-term goals were, so he stole my question.
There you go.
There you go.
You could ask me about my long-term goal.
We touched on this in the first interview process, but the area of, of my concern is our budget. And we have a new budgeting office with both a relative in Nathan and a relative in Steve.
Steven, yep.
So how are you, how are you a good fit to be an asset to creating a good city budget when we have such new people in position?
Well, I mean, on the one hand, I don't necessarily agree with new. Nathan Owens is down. That's not me, is it? It is me, that's true. Sorry. That's my alarm to 6:45, time to get up. You know, he's, he's new to that position, but he's not new to the department and he, he does have a, a pretty deep knowledge on how Cindy did things in the department. And I've found, I, I've engaged with him quite a bit of the budget so far and I do find them to be well-informed about it. So I'm not super worried about that. You know. But, you know, and I don't want to, you know, I, I'm not an accountant. I'm not, you know, necessarily the kind of guy that loves to crunch numbers. I mean, you probably know that about me. I'm more of a gregarious person, more about engaging with people and, and by the way, letting the department heads do what they're paid to do, which in his case is to be the expert on the budget. However, I mean, we, I, I, I think I am a kind of wise person and I, and I am, as a lawyer, pretty well informed about law as it relates to those things. And, you know, so I, I want to be the guy who's continually asking Nathan questions and having him think about, you know, things that we may need to address. For example, you know, that, again, with respect to the CARES Act, I mean, you may not know that we're not getting our statutory revenue sharing this month. That's not coming. And so to be able to pay the bills, we got, there's a CARES, you know, and so the, that's the bad news. The good news is there's a CARES Act application, again, another one, that will give us one and a half times as much as we would have gotten for our statutory revenue sharing. But we have to do it. We have to do that by the end of this month. And the state hasn't completely got their act together in terms of having that paperwork up on their website yet. But, you know, my approach has been to just stay engaged with them and conversant with them so that we know that we're paying attention to priorities and, and addressing them. I mean, we have things still to do. We have, once we're comfortable with what the revenue sharing situation is, we still have to come back to you with a budget that is not necessarily just a whole steady budget. If we, if we decide that the money's going to be, and so far, the signs are good. The money will be there, albeit from different sources, to, to meet our obligations without needing to eliminate everything that we hope to have done this year. You know, we, Nathan was, Nathan Berg was very big before he left on wanting, wanting to make sure that I looked at a cost of living increase for the non-union employees who haven't gotten it, well, the union employees have. And so, you know, we want to be able to, to do that this year, if it makes sense. But my approach is very conservative. I, I believe it when I see it and if money's there, then, you know, we'll do things. So I don't need to micromanage the finance department, but I try to stay very engaged with, you know, that's, that's the one department I want to know everything is A-OK. So I just try to stay engaged with Nathan as much as I possibly can, but that's quite a lot.
For years, I've had people tell me that Adrian was much more difficult to deal with in areas of economic development and code enforcement than the townships. I know we may not be comparing apples to apples, but what can we do, what can you do as an administrator to change that mindset?
Well, we have to have cross hall. We have to have a servant mindset, right? We, we work for the public and they're our customers, whether it's a contractor or resident or a landlord or whoever it is. They're the ones through one form or another who are paying our salaries. I mean, you've got to understand that. We need to be responsive. You know, one of my many gigs was, as I think I mentioned at the first interview, I was general counsel for a while for rock companies, which is offshoot of Gilbert's overall enter enterprise. But in those days, Quicken was located in Lebanon and as an officer of one of the companies I had to participate in, I wasn't an employee of theirs, but I had to participate in their, in their training that they did for them. He, and in those days, Gilbert did it himself. He, he gave a mass training to all his new people. And one, one thing I've never forgotten about that is, so he had certain rules about how quickly you had to answer messages. You had to answer emails within 15 minutes and phone calls, voicemails by the end of the day, I think. But, and what he's, and I'm not proposing to implement those exact rules, but what he said about that is, "And if any of you don't have time to return your calls in a, in a particular day, or your message in a particular day, if you don't have time, you're too busy, you forward it to me and I'll answer it." And I guarantee you, no one forwarded their messages to Dan Gilbert to answer, yeah. But it made the point that that is, your highest priority is, is customer service.
Thank you. Well, Brad stole my second question, so I only had two personally, so I'm, I'm good.
I, I do have another one to sort of a follow-up to that one, is that recently, excuse me, we outsourced our economic development to Lonley Now, much as we do for our city attorney services. At the same time, our city attorney has an office at City Hall. No one from Lonley Now has an office in City Hall. What would your plan be for communicating with Lonley Now to best serve the public?
You know, I, I mean, on the one hand, I would envision the community development director to be that liaison, whether it's me or somebody else. You know, would I like to have them be able to have a person that City Hall, I love that. You know, my discussions. You know, my discussions with Jim and Tim, you know, were kind of the to the effect that, well, that, you know, they'll do anything we want them to do, but not for fifteen thousand dollars a year. Right? So I would think that if we're going to have a dedicated person like that, that there would be a cost to that. I mean, and there is a bit of a, you know, there is a bit of a conflict because they do serve the county as a whole and not just the city of Adrian. And and so, yeah, you know, I I'm still explore. I mean, I guess what I would like to say is I'm still exploring that relationship. We haven't, you know, really had it that long, right? As you heard at our meeting yesterday, so we want to see what it can be. I'd love it to be as much as it can be. I'd love them to be as accessible via City Hall as they possibly can be.
Thank you. I'm all set. Thank you.
Well, I guess then I would like to ask if you have any questions for us and then if you would please give a closing statement after that.
Well, my question is always the same, what's your process gone forward?
I don't think we've quite determined. That's why we're all looking.
I saw your draft schedule. You're supposed to decide. Eight o'clock, you're supposed to decide. Yeah.
Right. We don't know.
Okay, well, I'll give a closing statement. I've kind of already said parts of that. But, you know, like I, like I said, at the end of this month, I've been here for one year. I think that I've had gotten a lot done in that time. But during that time, you may or may not know that I've had a lot of other work to do too. I mean, I think most of you know that I, you know, my contract for being community development director allowed me to do other work and I did do other work to make, kind of make my nut. And so I would often leave here and I'd go to far fun places for planning commission meetings or I'd go home and review a contract or whatever it was. I would really love to turn my attention solely here. You know, this position would allow me that opportunity. That would that would be a blessing to me to be able to focus my time and energy in one place that I enjoy. And, you know, like I say, I hope I'm a known quantity for you. I hope I'm somebody you don't have to speculate about, that you know what I'm capable of doing, have done and and will do. Kind of like the combo of public and private. Worked roughly half my life in the public sector and half my life in the private sector. So I think I bring an experience and a judgment through that, you know, broad range of life experiences that is maybe different than than your typical candidate might have. You know, I don't suspect I would have made it through many Gov HR vetting processes because of the, because my focus hasn't been city management throughout my career. But, you know, I'm happy that you've given me this opportunity. I'm excited about it. Like I said earlier, I feel like I've hit the ground running so far and I'd like to keep running and keep doing what I'm doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, where do I go? Back to the hot room?
Free to stay in here.
Oh, I'll just stay, it's way cooler here.
Use rest really fast, everybody needs a quick break before we begin.
Oh, I'm not talking, I'm asking. I have a fancier mask that goes with my suit, but it's really hard to talk in. This one's at least like stick out a little bit to my lips.
Yeah.
Three hundred and sixty five days a year.
What about leap year?
And then two. I only know the one TV channel that's made.
I'm just switch this way because Brad and I already spent a lot of time together, so why don't you?
Hey, don't don't start rolling around down here. Put up some cards.
Put a big bear on this. She got her rope. No, we're going to, oh.
Mayor Hayes? She's out of the room. May I ask you a question of the commission?
We're at a break at the moment, so I don't think.
That's my question. Are you on break or are you going to go back into session?
We're we're at a short break for for a couple of minutes.
Okay, that's fine. We can't always hear you here. Thank you.
Yep.
You're looking pretty dapper tonight.
Thanks, great.
Different than your regular Zoom outfit.
It's a big night.
I understand, that's why I dress that. This is my, that's what I call my wedding suit.
That's your marrying and marrying suit, isn't it?
Well, something like, no, this is the suit I bought for my daughter's wedding. Can you drive over there?
Yeah, Uber, that was Uber. Or is it your Lyft?
Yeah, that was my Lyft. I may need a ride home from somebody. Or I'm close enough to walk. Now I was thinking. When we have these meetings on purpose, you want to bring refreshments for one refresh.
You already had two zones.
Well, I know, he told you. I didn't tell him, though. So shoot your mouth off again, aren't you? Oh, Jerry used to, Jerry, he used to break like Sam, just scrap these and clean it up like then veins like I did.
Yeah. All right, Mayor.
All right. Well, let's discuss.
I'll go. Go ahead, if you're ready.
No, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, so first off, I very much appreciate both of you going for this position. I feel like both of you are very qualified for the position and we're fortunate to have. To be put in a situation that we have to make a real decision. It's not, it's not a very clear one. From just to go in order, Mr. Thomas, you've got a very accomplished career in in public service. And for that, I thank you and applaud you for that. We need good leaders in public service and unfortunately, it seems to be a dying or difficult profession to find find people in. So you you have experience in communities larger than ours, which which I can translate now just very nicely. Mr. Elliott, you you had a year interview and you are, you marked your anniversary during your interview and that helps. Right, wrong or indifferent, it's been a year interview to get to know you, to to get a feel for you, to to understand your tendencies, understand your style. That's all part of it. And in my eyes, it's a big part of it. So I do have a decision made in my mind and I'm very, very comfortable with a decision that I have come to in my mind, but I would like to hear what's some of my observations from my peers as well as the community ours before I vocalize my opinion.
Okay, I'll kind of, I'll go next, I guess. I was always, you know, this is my second time doing this and I was going to look at this position very objectively. You know, we have an internal candidate, we have an external candidate. And and I'm one that, in my opinion, I'm one of six votes here that's on this dais. And and I was in a determination based on I see that 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 is the best fit. But also, you know, I have different leadership styles than than my my other five colleagues. Thomas, that twenty plus years of municipal experience is is very valuable. I think Commissioner Watson hit the head or nail on the head when he said that bigger communities, it always translates down, right? So but I think it's it's a lot tougher when you go from a smaller community to the city our size. Greg, same, you know, if you like, again, I hate to feel all these answers here, but you got a year interview, but 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 you've also said, you know, a month in that seat. And it hasn't been an easy month. I'm very busy. I view this position as as the six of us giving either Greg or Thomas the tools, you need to do the job the correct way. And and we set a vision of the city and then you carry it out. Very fortunate I've had two qualified candidates, but like Commissioner Watson said, I, you know, I have a decision made and it's not as clear cut, but I have a decision made and I'm confident in making that.
Okay, I I want to thank both of you for coming. I think that both of your interviews, excuse me, were very good. You both bring different and very interesting perspectives. Thomas, your your twenty five years of municipal services, very impressive. Greg, on the other hand, your service in working with municipalities and in the private sector, I think can lend themselves to the city too. I I know that, I think, Christopher Watson said that you've you've had a year's interview where we've we've only had a short time to get to know Mr. Thomas. I know that I personally have become very comfortable with Greg over that year's time and seeing how he has dealt with staff and and how he's handled different situations that not only are the situations over the last thirty days, but situations in his community development role. So I liked both both interviews. Tough decision. I sort of have my mind made up, but I want to hear what everybody else says the same.
I'm going to start with Greg first. Things that I liked about what you said and I think I'd like to impress some of what I heard is that is your commitment to Southeast Michigan. I I do like that. That's very important that you know the area and you can hopefully bring in businesses and into our specific town. Also, I like the emphasis you always have placed on downtown, near and dear to my heart. And I do think I agree with you, driving downtown Adrian is so valuable to the whole area. Your private sector experience truly impressive. And I think that the combination of both public and private is is very good. So Thomas, I love that you are calm and I do think that you're going to bring a solidity to, as you say that, to your workforce, your history of being able to set goals for your employees is so very impressive. So that your employees know what they're looking for and towards. And that's really, yeah, that's something. Your your history of funding and finance is what draws me to you. Do you think that that experience is going to be very valuable to, well, it is very valuable because everything runs on the budget, other than the person, you know, what they actually do, but a bunch of dry stuff, everything. And that's that's important to me too. So I I'm leaning one way. But again, I'm open. Good discussion. It's very difficult. Yes, it's, but it's, I I feel it's a very great position to be in to have a difficult decision to make. But it means that we have two highly qualified candidates for this position. In a perfect world, you're you're the perfect candidate together. Like you you take your your private background and what what you've shown us, you take Thomas's, you know, twenty five years' experience, your budgeting, you know. So you have qualities that each of you have to be a great asset to our community. And because of that, I I also do feel I am leaning one way, but I am also very open. And I and I do want to hear, you know, I I do want to hear what everyone has to say, including, you know, the public. I I've had quite a bit of public approach me in recent weeks with opinions just from first interviews. And not to say that we're going to, that we're always going to agree with that, but it but it does, you know, there there we are representatives of of the public and their opinion really does matter. And you need to, you know, listen to that and take that into account as well. And I happen and honestly, I felt I was leaning one way pretty strongly. And because of public comment and various entities approaching me about, you know, their opinion from listening to the first interview has made it conflicted. And I feel maybe maybe even more conflicted after today, but I am leaning, I am leaning one way, but I but I I am open.
First off, as others have said, I want to thank both of you for being here tonight and participating in this process. You know, we are going to be tasked with making a decision that is probably one of the most important decisions that we can possibly make as a commissioner. To your point about Thomas, a wealth of experience, just, you know, a very impressive background. You've done a lot of jobs, including city administrator, city manager job, so you know what you would be getting into. And like I said, just very, very impressive. Greg, you, as several people have mentioned, have had that year long interview. Serving on the planning commission, I will tell you, I haven't always agreed with everything you had to say. But I respect your opinion and as I said, but you have a tremendous background. And like Commissioner Robert said, I like the fact that you've got the public and the private industry experience. Something I haven't had the public experience, but I've had the private industry and and I feel pretty strongly about how important that is. I'm starting to gain a little bit better understanding about how government works. But anyway, so I I agree that, you know, we have a very difficult decision to make. We have a very important decision to make. But I have, I have my mind in a place where I can make that decision tonight. Thank you.
You know, I I want to say that there's, there's not a perfect candidate out there, okay? I know that, you know, in the in the world of sports, you're you're always ratings potential talent, okay? And in baseball, we talk about the five tool player, okay? But even that five tool player strikes out and makes errors. And so what it comes down to, when when management looks at the five tool player, it's what's your comfort level with that person? Okay, I mean, I think that we have two upstanding candidates here. But ultimately, that that sports team has to decide who am I most comfortable with going down the road? Knowing that either one of those candidates is going to falter at some point. But so you you have to trust your gut. so you you have to trust your gut.
Yeah, my gut is it's simple. You know, I I this is the most important job we have as commissioners outside of the government budget is is hiring your CEO. Who do I want to run my company? Who do I want to hold accountable to? Um, because I've told a few, you know, I'm not an easy person to work for. I'm not, I'm not very demanding and sometimes I bring my private life into the public's life, which is probably not ideal. But when you, when you, when you're a businessman or a woman, you you know, your life doesn't lie. And I treat the city as the same way when it comes to money, when it comes to leadership, when it comes to accountability. And 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 I've been here through some big decisions over the last one and a half years. So, um, and I'm not, I'm comfortable in that role, I'm comfortable in my in my in my private life. But this 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 hire is 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 all turned out, who do I think can come in and lead the city and hold everybody accountable to the same standard? Because I'm not going anywhere during that years, I'm gonna be here. So I'm gonna make sure that, you know, like 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 Lance said, in my gut, I have to know what's right. So and and it's not as clear cut as as some of you, I'm sure, but, um, so I'm still kind of going back and forth. But because we have two great candidates, you know, you know, we do so. But I do this strictly as as who I think that can walk that plank. You know, I told commissioners in the past that that I don't know who'd want this job, you know? I don't have, I know, I have two jobs that city, I I have a business, but my business, I don't have a boss. You know, my boss is the voters, you know, when it comes to this position. But to have six that think differently, that 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 have different ideas and you're getting pulled, forget about it, you know, and 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 God bless the people that have done this, you know, right? But but, you know, we're in pickle here because we got two really good candidates and 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 you have to make the best decision like Lance said, that's in your gut, so.
Do we need a motion to open up the public comment or can we go straight to public comment before a motion?
Oh, you can go to public.
Yes.
Is it still three minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
This is general public comments, let me get my time ready.
Do you want to go to public comment then?
I do.
Yeah.
Okay. Now we will have public comment. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit. Please state your name and address.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is Don Taylor, four seven five Meadowbrook Drive. First of all, I'm really disappointed because I believe you said when you set this meeting up that we would have an opportunity to ask questions of the candidates. That did not happen. And I think when you set that up a week or so ago, that was the case. It seems to me your questions are focusing on specific items rather than how do we have a general approach to governing our city? We have an opportunity right here to think out of the box. And I think, uh, one of our candidates gave us that opportunity. New ideas, lots of experience, some good, some bad, shared with us some of his wins and losses. There's a new energy maybe. I think our city needs that. I believe a broad approach to managing and growing our city is important right now. Now, I think our city administrator needs to be able to lead based on guidance from the city commission and step back and let him or her do that. So think long and hard about how you make this decision tonight. Thank you.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Uh, yes, Mayor, uh, this is Jim Berryman, six seven six Conecrest. I would like to disagree with the the previous speaker. Let me start by saying quickly that I I commend both candidates for coming out in in front of the commission and the public and and bearing their their lives and their soul for an interview. So I think both need to be commended for that. I also think in the commission has to make a decision. I I think leadership in the city comes from our elected officials. That's the mayor and our city commissioners. It's your decision. I've had the opportunity over the last year to work with Greg Elliott, not as an administrator, but in his former position. And I have found him to be very smart, very accessible. Uh, and I have listened to the interviews before and I've sat here for almost two and a half hours tonight. And I don't like to talk negatively about anybody. I like to talk positively about the person that I support. And I I do support Greg Elliott. I I I think in his interviews, I think he has shown the, that he understands the importance, economic importance of our colleges to this community. I think our future economically greatly depends on the success of all three of our colleagues. And I think the other aspect is is knowledge and appreciation for public-private partnerships. Public-private partnerships have is what has moved this city forward, certainly moved the downtown forward. And our future in the city of Adrian, as far as I'm concerned, for economic development and and the quality of life depends on the success of those public-private partnerships. I think Greg understands that. I appreciate the year of being often on, having the opportunity to work with him. Again, I think he has shown himself to be very articulate and very accessible. And I think he would be an outstanding city administrator very much.
I'm giving it a few more seconds, just some people struggle with me. Hearing no other public comments, we will move into Commissioner comments.
Would this be appropriate time to make a motion?
Yes.
Spencer Kiaris?
There you go.
I made the motion just to repeat the same as before to appoint Greg Elliott as the next city administrator. Watson.
Support, Gauss.
Is there any public comment? Are there any commissioner comments?
Uh, I'll go. The basis of my my reasoning, I do think we have momentum in the city. And and having been here when when we appointed our prior administrator, there's an interruption and rightfully so when we bring somebody new in. We're very fortunate that Greg has has displayed himself in a way that is favorable in my eyes to be the next city administrator that will allow us to continue with projects, continue with items that are that are pertinent, as well as to give consistency to the face that's on the second floor. This is in absolutely zero ways any kind of discount to Mr. Thomas and his qualifications and skills. We are just very lucky that we have a qualified candidate that came in-house that was able to interview for a year and sit in the seat for a month.
I think Mr. Watson said it well.
Being quiet for a minute and just waiting to see if anybody, because I I feel like Commissioner Hoult wants to say something, but I wasn't sure.
It's it's tough decision for me. Um, I'm on the fence, to be honest, right? So so, you know, it's it's I have to do this objectively and and I have to, my gut has to be right. And like I said, it's it's a, it's the most important hire we have. We only have three, but it's the most important hire we have and and again, I I I think both candidates bring a lot to the table. You know, I'll just be honest, my, I would like, I would, I like experience better personally when it comes to municipal experience. But, um, again, I think Greg did a good job, you know, in the month he was there and 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 really, you know, really got the third floor back on track. Tough, it's tough, but we'll vote.
I'm very much tired myself for the exact same reasons. I'm not, I've made my decision. And I'm going to choose stability.
Look, it's just, it's one and one A, you know, whichever way you go. I'm gonna be happy while I'm at the door either way. So and 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 that's how I feel about it. So I'm not pounding the table, you know, per se, because I think, you know, that'd be wouldn't be fair to the candidate, because I view them one and one A, either way you go, so.
Like I said, it's a good problem to have, even though it's a tough decision, but it's a good problem when you actually have two candidates where you where you feel that way. It's a very good problem to have. Any other commissioner comments? All right. I have a motion to appoint Greg Elliott as city administrator. That motion was by Commissioner Watson with a second by Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Excuse me.
There he is. Yeah.
Um, I think the, probably the intent was actually to make a conditional offer. There is additional due diligence that GovHR does on the finalist. And you also might have due diligence there, I'm not certain, as well as an employment agreement, which is typical to be decided upon at which point you then would have that motion.
I do have that, Ryan, I can read that. So the motion would be to make a conditional offer to Greg Elliott, finalist for city administrator contingent on the final due diligence and verification checks. Educational, driving, record, drug test, if we require, physical, if we require, and to authorize Greg Elliott to enter into negotiations.
Uh, to authorize an individual to enter in negotiations, whether you designate the attorney or the mayor.
I have in my motion in line with how Mayor presented it.
Support, Gauss.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Gauss to make a conditional offer to Greg Elliott, finalist for city administrator, contingent on the final due diligence and verification checks and to authorize an individual, what what am I supposed to say there? What did I say? Sorry, and to authorize the mayor to enter into negotiations. Roll call, please.
There he is. There he is.
I know, I heard you.
Sorry.
I just have to go with my gut, yes.
Commissioner Hoult?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schrader?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Okay, you're gonna have to help me with the verbiage on the motion.
Make a conditional offer to Greg Elliott.
So the motion, okay.
To make a conditional offer to Greg Elliott.
Okay.
Finalist for city administrator contingent on the final due diligence and verification checks and to authorize the mayor to enter into negotiations.
And authorize the mayor to go into negotiation, correct?
Enter into negotiations.
Okay, so hopefully I get this right. I apologize if I don't. I'm gonna do my best. Okay, the motion to make a conditional offer for city administrator to Greg Elliott and do is contingent and due diligence. Finalized, wait, finalized. Okay, contingent on a final due diligent and final verification check and authorization for the mayor to enter into negotiations is approved by unanimous vote. Get that right?
Yes, yes, it's definitely close enough.
Sorry, guys.
All right. Can I get a motion for this meeting to adjourn?
So who?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.